Uh, somebody running for councilman for District C. You want to bring the businesses back in District C. What is your plan?
We want to open a, a tax incentive, an economic division where we give you a tax incentive to come to Gersh Memorial District C.
Well, is that something you feel like you can promise as I said earlier? You cannot promise that you cannot deliver?
No, we can, we can, we can ask of that. That's on a bigger issue when asking people. That's a, a tax incentives mean that the city, everybody losing money. They did one on Enterprise. They gave them a tax incentive break where they came, they gave them a break on their taxes. So that's the first thing. We, like I said, you got to start somewhere. I got to give you something maybe, oh, well, why not go to South? Well, I get a tax incentive to come on this major intersection that connects I-10 to 210. That goes from Cameron all the way up to Shreveport. I'm gonna give you a tax break. I can't promise it because somebody else got the vote on it. But that's what my plan is to ask, can we have the same thing? Like right now, they expanding Enterprise Boulevard all the way to almost Mars Bluff. And everybody gonna get tax incentives because that's what they offer. I want that for Gersh Memorial.
Ah, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to another episode of the Asian King Podcast. The person we got on the pod today is very special to me. We go way back and he's very important on the podcast because with him, we had so many important people because of him. And he's really doing great thing in the community. I mean, everybody know him and I'm gonna let him speak on that. And without further ado, Tommy Bilbo. I almost said T. Bill. Just go back to T. Bill.
No, you can say T. Bill, man. My wife don't like it. I am T. Bill.
Yeah.
Okay, so who is T. Bill or Tommy Bilbo?
Well, Tommy, uh, this is a childhood name. Uh, T. being short for Tommy and Bill being short for Bilbo. In, in, in the down east, my dad is named Tommy Bilbo. So T. Bill down east is meaning little Bilbo. Cause my dad was Tommy. So I was always little Bill because my daddy was Tommy. Then as I got older, I became Tommy, but T. Bill was actually little Bill. Little Bilbo.
The thing is, give us like a little touch of your background. I mean, of course, as you said, everybody knows you. Like where you've come from, your upbringing, things that you've learned. Like I said,
There's some people that may, may not know.
May not know you. Who are you?
Well, I'm a local guy. Born, raised in Fisherville. Isolate area between Broad Street and North Lake Charles. And we were very proud, proud, proud people. You know what I'm saying? We worked, we played, we ate, we did everything together. Uh, I went to elementary in Fisherville, Carver and Ross Street. I went to middle school, Reynold. I went to high school, Lake Charles, Boston. With the same people, all of us knew each other. It was family, family environment. You know what I'm saying? I grew up where everybody was family. And I, I'm proud of that. Yeah, I raised my, my kids in the same type of environment. And that's what I'm most proud of, just being family. Family matters, man. Family first to me. So even when my wife started businesses and everything, we built it around family. We hired family. If somebody we knew their family, they came in, we took care, we even took care of over a hundred people within our businesses. Because I believe in taking care of that first. And that's how you grow. You grow within. If you can't build what you got internally, you'll never have nothing outside.
So I mean, right now, right now, you're running for, uh, City Council. So like what inspired you to run for City Council in District C? And what do you hope to accomplish?
Well, District C, like I said again, when I grew up, District C was the prime area that you wanted to live. That's where everybody lived at in District C, in the Old Park area, the, the flower streets, the, that was where your upper echelon people lived. And we used to ride our bikes into this area and we, we, uh, they shut down a, a softball field, baseball field that we played growing up. It was called like St. Henry. And we all moved to Yuba Park so we could ride our bikes to practice. And we would see these big homes and nice cars. We like, we'd be, we'd be riding in practice, you'd be playing them games like, that's gonna be my house one day, you know? It's gonna be my house because that's, they had pools. They had everything. You had all the best stores, you had grocery stores, you had restaurants, you had bowling alleys, you had putt-putt. Everything was in District, District C was a place to live. We didn't even have South Lake Charles. So when I was able to purchase my first home, well, that's where I want to be. When I moved in Old Park on 18th Street where I live today, when I moved in, me and my father drove up in his old truck. Everybody on the street came outside and looked like, who is this? You know what I'm saying? Cause everybody was doctors, like it was professionals. That's where you stayed, everybody. So my, 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 all my friends, all my family, everybody was so proud of me because I bought my first home and we bought this in Old Park. You know what I'm saying? We grew up more in Fisherville, the, the Terrace, the Village. But to move in Old Park back in the nineties, man, it was a major accomplishment. I was proud of myself, my kids, everybody was happy. So then after I bought my home, I bought my home in like 98. I was probably 25, 26, somewhere in that age group. They had like a steady decline. Not because I moved there. This, the South opened up. And it was a new Old Park. All the businesses started leaving gradually. Everything wanted to move south. So to me, I'm like, is it us making it leave? Why? Cause back then the South was flood zones. So you leaving great conditions. The stores leaving great conditions. I've been in Old Park since 90, I never flooded. You know what I'm saying? Never. I never had water got past my driveway. But you moving to go live in a flood zone. Rice fields. You know what I'm saying? That's what the South was. And that's where the business was going. And you ask yourself, you gotta truly ask yourself, why? Would you want to move from a non-flood zone area into a rice field? Where the rice, the, the, the ground gonna saturate the waters, gonna hold water and that. But would you want to invest in paying top dollar to live in those areas? When I bought my home in 98, I paid eighty-two thousand for it. Damn. Three bedroom, two bath, patio, outhouse, beautiful landscape. Slowly I saw it leaving. Slowly I saw it leaving. My kids, when I'd be working, back then I was working at Firestone. My kids could go down the street. Pizza Hut, Popeyes, Burger King. Like I said, putt-putt. The bowling alley, they could just go walk down the street, they, we going, we going bowling. All right, y'all go enjoy. When they come back, everybody knew us. It was a family neighborhood. If my kids bought something from Popeyes or Pizza Hut, all you can eat. I'd go pay them later. I'd be like, okay, well, what did it spend this week? You know what I'm saying? I'd go pay my tabs. It was, it was a family neighborhood. It was, it was a great place to live. That's where you wanted to stay. Beautiful park. Yuba Park was a beautiful park. Everything was, we had everything in District C, everything you wanted. Krogers, Market Basket, Winn-Dixie, Jones, you had family business. It's nothing you didn't have. We didn't have to leave, I didn't have to leave Old Park for anything. Only time I really left Old Park was to go to the mall for them or to drive them to the skating rink. If not, I had, I had everything within walking distance. Or two, three minute commute.
But as you was saying, you wanting to be a council, uh, councilman within the city. But in a sense, it's a job that's, in a sense, that's like a politic wise. Like, can you say like anything that you, you've dealt with that you made, ma- 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 make you feel like you're ready for politics in a sense?
Well, even though I'm running for politics, for me, it's about being a people's person first. But the, the, because the guy who holds the seat, Mr. Guian, man, he been holding this seat for like seven, six, seven terms. You talking twenty-four, twenty-eight years. You can't replace that. No, none of us running can replace somebody that been doing something for twenty-four, twenty-eight years. So my thing for me and for District C, I want to get to know the people because it's a different District C from when I grew up. District C now done expanded. It's, it's in Boe Blong, it's in Morganfield. So it's a very diverse neighborhood now. So what one group may want, somebody else might want something completely different. They fussing about flooding issues. Boe Blong don't have flooding issues. Morganfield don't have flooding issues, they got retention ponds. You know what I'm saying? So everybody gonna want something different. And for me, I just want to get to know the people. So for me, I can be more accessible. But I mean, accessible, then you can call me and together we can fix your problem. Cause I don't know your problems. I don't have any problems. I've never had any. So for me, as a city councilman, I want to get to know the people to find out. Cause it's all discreet issues that they fight now. Cause you got two different sides of District C. You got coming off of Broad, coming up Sixth Avenue where we got, we call it Broadmoor area and Hill Crest and then people fighting a complete different issue than Old Park. Now, Old Park fighting a deep, complete different issue than Morganfield, O'Boe Blong, because they're, they're expanded. So you got to get to know everybody to truly know what a real problem is and what's gonna be feasible that you can fix.
So I mean, right now, what do you believe was the biggest challenges facing District C?
Bringing back businesses. The biggest thing. Cause now we got to go, we got a Walmart, a couple of liquor stores, uh, some chicken places. We don't have nothing that we had that made me want to live in Old Park. So the biggest thing in Old Park and District C is to bring back business even Morganfield. Morganfield still got the drive. Boe Blong, you got to go, what, about two miles to Krogers? Or to,
Or Walmart or anything else nearby?
But Walmart not, Walmart don't have much. Or you got to go to Rouse's, but you got an Alvin's. Uh, no, Alvin's even further. So what's the closest store to you?
Kroger.
Huh?
You'd have to be Kroger.
Kroger? That's about what?
Mile, two miles, it would take.
Yeah, and if you, if you getting up late and you got, you got kids, sometimes two miles in Lake Charles is a long time. It's not two miles in the city, nothing but for us. Two miles is taking you out of your way when you got prominent new neighborhoods that deserve to have a store. Outside of the, the Walmart. You know what I'm saying? You don't think you deserve to have a store that you can go?
Absolutely.
Yes, but we got to, we got to earn the right to have a store. Because the stores just don't look at, city council don't control anything about what store, what business come here or where they want to buy business. We don't, nobody control that.
But also something you said, the guy that you're gonna be replacing is somebody that's been there for twenty-four, twenty-eight years. Clearly he has a whole lot more experience than you do.
More do.
So therefore, what do you think you, you gonna feel like you need to do to catch up on that experience?
That's why I talk to him all the time. He eat at my house. I, I learn from him. If I, if I got a problem, I know I can call him. You know what I'm saying? And his best advice to me would be to learn the people. Know your people. Know the people who just want to complain and know the people who really gonna go with you to fix the problem. Cause all problems is not city council problems. It could be police jury, it could be somebody else. But you want to deal with the people that know that's gonna go to the extreme to get their answer. And that's, he told me that and that's what I believe in. They got some people don't like him anymore, but if he been running for six, seven terms, he did something right at one part of his life. You see what I'm saying? And he say he stressed on know your people. Cause let your people know you and they know you by name. And they know, once they know that you gonna go fight for them to the end, they gonna trust you. Then your problems is less because they know you done went to that extreme for them. They know when you called and they called, you gonna answer. And then when you got a problem, then you know you gonna make that phone call.
Cause as you know, we live in the South and I don't know, I'm sure you recall probably what? Seven, eight years ago, probably a bit longer, I can't quite recall. We had this thing that happened at Walmart where like there's like a fourteen year old girl who stabbed another fourteen year old girl with a knife. I'm sure you can recall that moment. So as a person that's currently working, well, running for council, how, what do you have planned to help people? Like to help solve crime among youth?
Well, it's getting to know the police officers. The police, the sheriff department, the marshals. Develop a plan to meet with them so we can see where the true problems are and what's causing the true problems. Nobody can stop, I hate to say it, nobody can stop somebody if somebody decides to stab someone. You feel me? But we got to make it more attractable that more people may want to be a police officer or may want to be a sheriff or a marshal. That you can have more people out to take care of those things. You see what I'm saying? Nobody wake up today and say, oh man, I want to be a police officer. You know? They don't go to college and say, I want to be a sheriff. So we got to make it more attractable so more younger people, even guys coming out the military, that's where you, you get a lot of it. To where you can have more people, because they shorthand it. I, I'm, I meet with the marshal all the time. They shorthand it. The sheriff department, they shorthand it. Police station just was advertising to employer, they shorthand it. So do we, do we take those people and post them at the grocery stores? Or do we have them maintain the neighborhoods when you don't expect no crime? You don't expect nobody to get stabbed at a grocery store.
I gotta ask you this, I gotta ask you this. Cause we had the sheriff in the podcast sitting exactly in that chair that you're sitting on right now. And we also kind of asked him, you from the community and as a fellow black man, you already know how most black men look at the police officers when they see him, as if they are the enemy. So how do you convince a young black person, you need to be a cop or sheriff or marshal or whatever it may, it may be to help protect your community? And not have his peers look at him as if he's the enemy?
Today, kids, first thing they think about is the enemy. But the most important thing they think about is financials. We got to get the pay up to make it attractive. Why we all, why we all work at the plant?
Cause the pay is attractive.
Cause the pay is attractable. They don't care what we look like if I'm getting paid enough. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You got to make, you gotta get comparable pay for those people because they got a strenuous job. They got a job that they putting their life on the line all the time. I, I sort of saying way about teachers. Everybody preach education, but the teachers are the lowest paid people.
But let me, let me, I mean, let me, let me make this point though. Because I agree to what you said to want to a certain degree. Because so like working in the plant doesn't really have a bad stigma to it. It's just like, you work in the plant, it's like a nice things to do, right? It's legit. But as a police officer, you know, you got rap music, calling you a pig, you know, like you can't like snitch and you're just like, he's just like, there's the guys like trying to take you away, you know, like. So having that stigma attached to it is harder like in the young kids listening to those music showing, hey, these people is just kind of like the enemy. So it's kind of hard for them to just like switch their mind, even though I'm, I understand the, 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 the money might be good. I don't think like it might help, but I don't think like, unless if you can change, like in a definite ways, like something like, you know, like the media. Because you know, like go, you watching things on Facebook and YouTube and stuff like that. I think it would be like more than the pay, they would have to change like the perception.
I understand.
About that.
And you're right, but that's a, that's a growing, that takes time. We ask what we could do now to change the whole perception of what a cop is. It took generations for it to get bad. You know how long it gonna take it for it to get good?
Yeah.
Like, you know what I'm saying? I, I remember when we grew up, everybody knew who the black cops was. Everybody knew them. You knew them by name. You, you saw them in the school. You saw them at basketball games, football games. Everybody knew them. We, we don't have that anymore. You know, we don't even see that. So it's gonna take, as long as it took to it to change, it's gonna take even longer to get that back. Because you grew up now seeing as bad as you, soon as you leave your house. If the cops stop you, don't say nothing. You know what I'm saying? Cause they gonna do this to you, they gonna do that to you. And, and, and they got bad people in, in every, in every profession. But every cop not bad.
But as you said, if it's like you running for city council, do you feel like in that position, you can make, not only make it, but help making changes in that part of, set of?
For me, I don't know how much I can do as a city councilman toward the police. But I can meet with them and I plan on having meetings with them so we can have community and events in my area. Hopefully that the kids will show up or the parents will show up so we can start trying to build a bond with each other. Right now, right now in Old Park, we have a community event. Where the cops come out and they talk to us and they tell us how much crime has been reported in the area. You gotta get everybody involved. We got to change the perception, but it's still gonna take a long time now. Cause every time somebody do something good, you can do something good for five years. One bad thing, you, you back to square one. So most of all, we gonna meet with them. We gonna talk with them and together with the rules and guidelines, we gonna see what we can do, get into the schools. Like they did when I was young. They were, they were at the, the high school events, the junior high events. They were speakers. They was getting honored in front of kids. So the kids like, man, he, he getting an award or he come and talk to us. You know what I'm saying? So we got to do that to get them out in front of people to make it the perception better.
So like, you know, right now, it's like many Lake Charles resident feel unheard, right? By the government. So how you would ensure that's like the city council show like transparency with the people?
Well, like I said, we have, I, I, I went to HOA meetings in Morganfield. Blow Blong, I'm a good friend with one of the HOA presidents. I got to get out there and meet with them to see what they want. That's all, that's all I can do. You only, you only one person. I'm not gonna sit here and promise you something that I can't produce, say, I'm gonna go do this, I'm gonna go do that. To me, the, the best job of the city councilman is to know the people and get the people to trust you. Once they trust you, then you can, you can accomplish way more. I got to get them to trust me. I got to get them to know that because what's a lie to you may not be a lie to him. But you got to know I'm a least listening and, and, and answer when you call me. So more so is a people's person. You're the face of the community. You got like three or four jobs as a city councilman. You know, you review the budget, you approve the budget to where the, the money gonna go out in each area. And you ain't got these real like seven, y'all decide whether the budget, whether the budget fifty-three million or a hundred million. They come out with it and you tell your area what you need compared to what you as a city councilman might need or he might need. And y'all decide what's most important at that time, right? And you may, some people come up with some audaces where they got rules on this business come, what they can do and rules on public safety that you got to enforce if it happens. My main thing is that's rules already in place. That's by design. All I gotta do is tell you to follow the rules. Main thing as city councilman, he is the voice of the people. If you call me and your neighbor grass three foot high, we got proper standards. But why you not taking care of your yard? You know what I'm saying? Well, I will, but I was proud of what I had. When I got up every day, I wanted my yard to look nice. I wanted things that I purchased to look nice. We got to take care of ourselves first before we start pointing fingers on what somebody else don't do. We got to take care of ourselves. That's how you get everything, everything somebody may want. If you want Hooters, you want Best Buy and she might want a, a Winn-Dixie. Winn-Dixie is just not coming here just because they got some cheap property or some tax incentives. But we could, we want, we want to offer them tax incentives to come. Gersh Memorial is wide open for business. But they gonna still come do a study, they gonna ride that neighborhood.
But speaking on that, cause we're like, as you said, one thing that you kind of said is like, uh, as, as somebody running for councilman for District C, you want to bring the businesses back in District C. What is your plan?
We want to open a, a tax incentive, an economic division where we give you a tax incentive to come to Gersh Memorial District C.
Well, is that something you feel like you can promise as I said earlier? You cannot promise that you cannot deliver?
No, we can, we can, we can ask of that. That's on a bigger issue when asking people. That's a, a tax incentives mean that the city, everybody losing money. They did one on Enterprise. They gave them a tax incentive break where they came, they gave them a break on their taxes. So that's the first thing. We, like I said, you got to start somewhere. I got to give you something maybe, oh, well, why not go to South? Well, I get a tax incentive to come on this major intersection that connects I-10 to 210. That goes from Cameron all the way up to Shreveport. I'm gonna give you a tax break. I can't promise it because somebody else got the vote on it. But that's what my plan is to ask, can we have the same thing? Like right now, they expanding Enterprise Boulevard all the way to almost Mars Bluff. And everybody gonna get tax incentives because that's what they offer. I want that for Gersh Memorial.
But I mean, but like you say, it's not something that's, that's, that's kind of like guaranteed, but that's part of your plan.
That's part of the plan. Cause everybody got to realize it, it's seven councilmen. All you can do is propose it. Nobody can promise you nothing unless you get three. I'm not, if it's my plan, of course I'm gonna vote for me. I gotta get three other people on this plan to agree to what I want. But nobody should promise you anything because you don't have a say as a majority vote. You gotta be majority on this council to pass anything. Even in District C. I might want it, I still gotta get.
But so how you gonna work with those other city council to get things like?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So anyway, see, nobody was talking to you. So what I'm just saying, like, how you gonna work?
Okay.
Are you done? So, uh, but how you gonna work with like other city council? So if you know, you bring a plan like this for it to make it like, make it make sense for them to be like, okay, let's vote on that. So because you gotta have relationship and the sense with them to make things happen. How you planning on doing that?
It's called business. You got to build a relationship with anything. That mean it's deals you got to, you may not agree with, but I got to do something for you so I can get what I want. And that comes with building a relationship. Hey, I do like whatever team I need, I need this passed because it's gonna help my area. And return once my area get right, you might need something, I'm gonna get it passed to you financially or whatever it may be. But you got to be personable. You got to be where you can talk to someone. And I think out of everybody that's running for District C City Council, I got the most experience in, in business where I, I done, I done had contracts with the casinos. I had contracts with the airport. I done dealt business, so I know how to conduct business. Cause that's all it is, is business when you walk in that meeting, that's a business. It's a business transaction.
But do you feel like that's what, what separates you from the other candidates running for District C?
Yes. That my business knowledge and I'm approachable.
And I'm sure everybody that's been watching this is gonna know you and your wife were the proud owner of Meeks.
Yes.
So give us like a little background on that.
Well, most of that, now I'll tell anybody, the Meeks was my wife idea, man. You know what I'm saying? And when you married, you a teen. And I, I just supported her in whatever she wanted to do. But once she gets started, then my mind start turning and now we got to make it happen. Cause we, we, she always want an idea that she knows nothing about. She like a ground level person. Oh, Tommy, that's just, let's open a, a, a taxing limo service. Mick, we don't even have CDLs. You know what I'm saying? Tommy, let's open Meeks. Mick, you don't even cook. You know what I'm saying? You know, we just, she a ground level and get out the mud type person. And I'm more of the, I'm gonna make it happen no matter what. I'm a grinder. You know what I'm saying? And when you got that in you, it just built in you, nothing don't stop you. Nothing, I don't care. You tap on every wall if you're grinding. We get it done, we learn, we research and we, we make it happen.
Okay, so like, you know, affordable, affordable housing is like, actually is like a major concern.
Mm-hmm. It's bad.
The clip part, is it clipped on your pants?
Is it clipped this, is it clipped?
Oh, it might be in my pocket.
Yeah.
That freaking caught, I added a lot of that. How about my? Maybe one.
Yeah, you can, so it sound good?
That's better.
Okay. So like what I was saying, so affordable housing is a major concern. So like what I was saying, so affordable housing is a major concern. So what is your plan to ensure families in District C have access to quality and affordable homes?
Now, I tell, I say, everybody asks these type of questions. I'm building apartment complex. That I remodeled on on Oak Park Boulevard. We have no control of what's considered affordable housing. Cause affordable to you, maybe not affordable to you, or maybe a different affordable for me. All we real, all we really can control because they got, that's that's government funds, that's way beyond city council. You know what I'm saying? Sometime when you looking at your neighborhoods, it's like yourself, you live in in Bow Blown, right, new neighborhood. What would I tell you today if we gonna build some affordable homes? Apartments next to your home?
I'm sure I wouldn't like it.
That's what I'm telling you. For everybody that likes something, someone truly gonna dislike it. You you see what I'm saying? Truly, you you, that's a affordable homes is a.
That means you're gonna bring your whole kind of different kind of crowd around my house.
And what what's gonna happen to your home then?
My home, my home.
Yes. So everybody wants something, but do they really want something? So you got to really plan and look at areas that you can have the affordable homes. That it don't hurt the value of people who worked hard for what they own. You you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and everybody, I hate, I hate to say that, you know, I I work from my home. I work from my house. I I work, I work every day. They pay my home off and question, would you want it next door?
That is easy like, like, like this is easy for somebody else, but still you own a house, then you don't wanna have.
But that's why they got like HOAs and stuff. That's why it was formed, to to prevent those things. Now, if somebody wanna have affordable homes and and the government approve it and. And those people can purchase the property, and once they purchase, I I can't control what you do with your property. Then then so be it, but I don't wake up thinking about that. It's it's more prevalent things, concerns we have than. How many before they got, what, three, four apartment complexes they building on Fifth Avenue right now? They just built two by college prep, uh, by the war three. They got the colleges, they got, they got enough homes if somebody, they building a whole new subdivision off of Lake Street. You went behind the mall? Yeah, so the 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 city is doing their part. It it it's tough coming. If you pass on Lake Street, it's it's massive. Man, they wiped out a whole affordable home complex and rebuilding it, you know? That's gonna hold triple, quadruple amount of people that it ever held, brand new. So it's coming, they just, people gotta have some patience. You realize that we done had two of the worst things that ever happened in the history.
Hurricanes.
Two hurricanes and COVID.
And a freeze.
And the free, I'm talking in the history. But I'm talking about stuff that we never, I'm fifty-three in July. Stuff that never, ever happened in the history.
But I'm glad you brought up the hurricane and as somebody who's running for for councilman, you know, you live in the south, we deal with hurricanes. And you, as you were saying earlier, you kind of have, I guess you may say a mentor in a sense, the pre, the current, uh, District C councilman. Council, I mean, uh, teaching you. So what are, what are your plans? What have you learned that prepares you for, okay, let's just say we got like another, I don't know, category ten?
You you can't prepare. We we couldn't prepare then. He couldn't prepare. The mayor couldn't prepare. It had never, ever happened.
But I'm talking about the aftermath.
The aftermath. I really believe that the city did a great job with the aftermath. Cause you, you had no preparedness, but something ain't never happened. Now, I believe they got plans and things and plans, whoever it happened, they gonna better handle it better. But you never know when it's gonna be a natural disaster, what all this gonna do.
But like, but do you plan to send out your in your head, like, if that happened when you become city council, how you will handle it?
Uh, that is a a tough question, because you only can answer to what happens. I'm sure right, right now, everybody talking about people having insurance. That's the main thing. The main thing, what happened to people is the people who didn't have insurance. Did the damaged roofs, the. The houses being knocked down and invaded, you didn't have enough insurance. That's, that's not a, that's not a city council issue. You know what I'm saying? That's a, that's a personal issue. That's not even a mayor's issue. You know what I'm saying? Uh, that's, you can't compensate for a natural disaster. That's why it's called a natural disaster. All we can do is hope and pray that we survive and you've got enough coverage. Ain't no plan for a natural disaster.
But thing is, I understand what you're saying. People gotta have insurance and be ready for this, this kind of thing to where the insurance can take care of it instead of the complaining to the city. But as you know, people still gonna call you, especially the people who know insurance, the people that need assistance, people that are threatened, you name it. They're gonna be like, hey, councilman, my house is this, this, and this and that. Are you prepared to deal with all those phone calls?
We, I will be prepared to answer any phone call that come. And just like anything else, I'm gonna research and direct them to the people they need to talk to, whether it's FEMA. I'm a, all the programs, I'm a set up places that they can come and meet with those people to help them, especially in my district. If you come, I'm a, I'm a come and call FEMA. FEMA come on down and explain the rules and the regulations. I don't know it, I don't, I don't work for FEMA. You know what I'm saying? So it can be straight hand, straight for what the rules are and how you apply. And they really done that in Lake Charles before. We didn't attend. They did it. You know, everybody, I'm I'm not one to cry wolf. I'm not one to point the finger. Man, they. How long ago the storm was ago, the hurricane?
It was twenty twenty. Twenty twenty, yeah, twenty twenty, twenty twenty.
And it's twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, close to four years and four and a half years.
Man, your home beautiful.
Oh, thanks.
That's what I'm telling you. A lot of it is taking care of your business. If not, we got to find the resources how. And when FEMA come, you gotta be prepared.
And thing is, the fact that we had the privilege of having our current councilman in his chair and we had it, we had a sense of big brain. One thing that he actually said is like, you wouldn't believe how many people call you about some petty stupid stuff.
All the time.
So therefore, like, how are you preparing yourself? Of course, you you're ready to handle business if business needs to be handled.
Yeah, but phone calls don't bother.
But what happened to the phone call, that is just like a waste of your time.
Well, cause you never, a waste of your time is on, is not a waste of time than people that's calling.
Yeah, absolutely not.
So they're gonna feel important to them. That's why I said, I always tell people, together, we can find out an answer for you. If you want, you have a problem, well, to God, I'm coming meet you. Where, where you stay at? Twenty-four, thirteen, thirteen, yeah, I'm on my way. We're gonna make this call together. We're gonna call, we're gonna go downtown and see if the issue, if it's something that we can resolve together. It's your problem, right? We want to go together. There's that much serious, you call me, we gonna go find out. If I can't get the answer on the phone immediately, we gonna go talk, we gonna go downtown.
He does the thing, as you said, it's your problem, let's go together and figure it out. Most people, they don't do that. They're gonna be like, hey, I got this problem, fix it. Let me know when it's fixed.
No, I I'm 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 be, I'm be honest, always honest. If it's a problem to you, we gonna have to go together, because I never dealt with these problems. Like I said before, the man been in office twenty-four, twenty-eight years. So he know how to deal. If you have a problem, we gonna go take it together. So you know at that point, we did all we could. And if we're not happy, we gonna go further until we get an answer that we're satisfied with. It may be that's, that's not a city issue. It may be a state issue, maybe police, maybe a parish issue. You know what I'm saying?
But as you said earlier, you grew up in Fisherville, right, so which we born and raised within this town, that's home. So where does that passion to serve the community come from for you?
For me, I always. I worked the refineries all my life, right, and the pipes never talked to you.
No, they don't.
They never talked to you. And when I grew up, my father and mother provided a home that we gave, that they gave comfort to anyone. I remember one time they had a flood in the terrace in the seventies. My dad and his uncles and them took their trucks, they went and got people and they stayed with us, the people we never even know. It's nothing more gratification when I saw my dad and them come in and they could help someone. You know what I'm saying? Nothing more. As as a working man, that was the most gratifying thing I ever seen him accomplish. Was to go help someone. And when I saw that, I knew that I wanted to help. That's why I kept a, I coached kids. I stayed involved, because I wanted to help. Going to work just made money. But when you can actually help someone and you can see the appreciation they face, well, there's something as small as getting the grass cut or. A light bulb on a, on a, on a street light. It's no more gratification than that. I just wanna help people, man.
Man, that's a, that's a lot of phone calls though, like, I mean.
There's a lot of phone calls.
That's a lot of phone calls. Like, like people calling you, like, I mean, people can call you at any time.
At any time. And I'm gonna answer.
Yeah, that's.
That's, it's self gratification that if they need something, I'm gonna tell them, I can, I'm not gonna lie to anyone.
Yeah, but because that's definitely, that become, that's become part of your job.
When you, when you sign up for this, you saying I'm gonna answer this phone. If not, you mean it for the wrong reason. It's not a lot of money, so it's not about the money. Is that me, I just wanna help people and I can sleep good at night knowing that I'm always answering. And I'm gonna take pride in trying to help you. This, that's what I like to do.
But we know running for office is a tough job. It's a tough thing to do. So have you faced any unexpected, unexpected challenges during your, during your campaign so far?
Well, I didn't know it was gonna cost this much. You know what I'm saying? When you, when you come, when you never, ever ban this, banning or balance your books. And now you in it, twenty-seven thousand dollars plus. You know what I'm saying? You like, man, I'm I'm spending this kind of money to get sixteen hundred a month? By the time I get through, just joking, I could be running for four year terms. I ain't caught up without a spot, you know?
But I, I gotta ask you this though. As you saying, that's something you wanna do, that's something you love to do, helping people. As a matter of fact, you got more in than you will ever probably see back. So you got something you genuinely want to do. And I'm sure within this path, you got a family member, friends of whomever, who is in your ears. And I'm sure when you were in that idea by them, they had feedbacks, like, why are you doing this? Do you sure you wanna do this? How do your wife, kids and so on and so forth? How did this, those conversations went about?
They told me, if I talk to ten, especially my wife and my kids, they said, daddy, that's you. That's what you was built to do. They say that job is who you are. Go make yourself happy. That's you, that's, that's you all the way.
Even your wife?
My wife was overjoyed. She said, that's you, Tom, that's gonna make you happy. You've been trying to find something. Like I said, I've been working since I was nineteen, turning twenty as a provider, a proper provider for my family. So when I told them that, they was all like, man, go, that might make you feel complete, you know, that's, that's you, Bill. You know what I'm saying? My wife called me, Bill, my kids, T Bill, is that, that might make you complete, go do it. My, my baby girl came away from Baton Rouge just to ride on the float with me. You know what I'm saying? My oldest daughter live in Beaumont. She came there just to be there when I signed the paper, just saying that I was officially running. I mean, they, they love it. You know, they, everybody excited. My wife just a hundred percent in all the time. My wife just a, she's just a, she pro Tommy. You know what I'm saying? She can't say, she ain't gonna say pro T Bill. My wife pro me, whatever I want, whatever thing. And I'm like that with her too, you know what I'm saying? Cause my wife come home with all kind of stuff, all the business, everything we ever had. It was, most of it was her idea wanting to get it started. And then we just, we made it happen.
But this is like a different avenue. That's kind of like what I asked you, even your wife, because as we were discussing earlier, that phone will not stop ringing. The woman you get on there. So in a sense. But the thing is, will your wife be okay with sharing you with gazillion people?
She didn't share me with, I got four kids. She didn't share me with, I done coached kids all my life. She didn't share me with kids, she didn't share me with fraternity brothers, she didn't share me with friends. She know what makes me happy. But whatever makes me happy, she she fine with it and she supports it. Cause I, I tried to actually convince her to run. I said, Mick, if you was running for city council, would nobody run against you? Everybody loved me. I run for city council, twenty people wanna run. You know what I'm saying? You know? She said, no, that's something that, that's your passion. Go do it. And that's how it happened. I woke up one day, I told her, I talked to Mr. Gu Yan. And when he told me he wasn't running again for the third time, he done told me twice that he wasn't running. And he decided to run. This time, he told me it was official. It was a no brainer for me. Let's go get it done. I called a good friend of mine named the War Family Lab Designs. I called him, I said, man, get me some signs made. You said that fast? It was like last May. I've been having, I've been campaigning since May, June of last year. Anything I do, I'm all, I'm all the way in. And once I decide to do it, I'm in it. We've been campaigning since last May and June.
But what about that, 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 uh, those places, I think like, uh, what's that place called? I think that's the one that always got the floating back there. Uh, what's that place called? I think that's where we been staying. I forgot that, uh.
Um, the terrace.
The terrace.
Okay.
That's not in District C?
Yes, District C.
So how you deal with the?
They, alright. They, we call it the old terrace and the new terrace. If you been back there, they done bought, purchased most of all the homes in the old terrace. You been back there lately?
No, I haven't.
You saw most, all, all the homes gone. So that's gonna where, just like in Bow Blown or Morganfield, it's gonna where you gonna be able to hold water. You see what I'm saying? The, it's not safe for the government. Nobody gonna want the government or whoever paid these insurances. To keep allowing the area to flood out, flood out, flood out, because you really got one canal coming out of Oak Park, you got a canal behind them. And it's actually, the terrace is really low. It's just an old neighborhood. You know what I'm saying? So by them buying them homes out, they're gonna use that area to retain water to help out for the whole area. That's why I the hope they bought all the homes out. And that was before me, so that has no control of it, but that's what they done. That was the reason for it, so they can use that to retain water.
But something we actually talked about off camera, Ryan Street, which which I found like surprising. You were saying that Ryan Street is like a state.
State DOT controls Ryan Street.
So basically, it's kind of like Ryan Street, the city doesn't, doesn't have any control over Ryan Street.
Not all control. DOT just controls if you build something on it or how the water drain. It's just like, I tell everybody, you know, Ryan Street, uh, Gersh Memorial, Highway fourteen, Martin Luther King is one seventy-one. You know, we have to educate each other. And that's really one of my major plans is to educate people that who issues take care of what. You see what I'm saying? We don't have an understanding who take cares what. We think we gonna call the city council or the. The mayor for everything and sometimes it's, they don't even have that control. You know what I'm saying? So we gonna have to get informative on who controls what to know where we can solve a problem. Some problem is bigger than city or it's bigger than parish. You know what I'm saying? Cause the city is, is it's the smallest part of everything. You got city, parish and then state. But guess who get the call mostly for everything?
The city?
The city. Sometimes it's, it's not their problem. They can't do nothing. But we wanna educate people on who problem it really is.
But I mean, but in a sense though, you still can call the city, but the city's gonna work it out with state. And this is, I mean, because.
Well, but see, what makes us unhappy is the timeframe that happens. You see what I'm saying? Everybody wanna answer today.
I mean, you know, people, we impatient in some ways.
But if you knew who really had to answer the, to the, to the problem, you'd understand better and have more patience. And you'd get to a better resolution. If you know, if it's not a city issue, you know, you can't physically pick up the phone and call the state. And they gonna be like, you know what I'm saying, it's a state. But if you knew, if you had to call your city councilman, they had to contact somebody in the state. You know the timeframe that it takes for that to happen, they wouldn't get as impatient. You see what I'm saying? But a lot of times, we think as soon as we call, it supposed to get fixed today. But a lot of times, we think as soon as we call, it supposed to get fixed today. Sometime you can. Something as simple as a light bulb on a telephone pole or a light pole or maybe getting some grass cut. Yeah, you might could make a phone call or, but we gotta understand how long it takes to get a provision to put a street sign. You know what I'm saying? You gotta go all the way to the state level because now it gotta be documented. Because now you done changed the rules of whatever was going on that street. It takes longer to get those things to happen. So me, I'm gonna, it's a learning process. I'm gonna be learning those things. It's like I'm gonna be going back to college. So because when I give you an answer, I can give you the right answer. You know what I'm saying?
Right now, I know you running for your campaign, so for District C. So right now, I think like, I was, I will imagine that you, you know, you you been like walking around, checking the whole district, knowing everything about it. So if elected, what is the first like initiative or project that you would like to tackle?
Me, it's businesses. If I can't do anything, that'd be the pass the tax incentive to get business to attract.
But do you have, do you have any like, so any type of businesses you got in mind that you would like?
Well, it's not, it's really, because I tell people, it's really not what I want.
It's what the people want.
It's what the people want. I'm just, I'm just a face of it. I'm the person that's gonna sit in a meeting and and these people come in town when they got to meet these orders, these rules. I'm just a person to talk. But. So it's what the people want. So that's why I walk door to door.
We gotta address this, though. You said businesses, anything that can bring more money, people getting employed within the community, which I can understand.
Yeah.
But let's just say for the sake of argument, if you was like a strip club.
Who knows?
That's business.
Well, no, but no, because you asking me to put a strip club in the middle of a a neighborhood.
You've been to Atlanta.
Yes. But as a city, it's different. This Lake Charles is a city, but it's not that type of city. It's not Houston. It it it'll never pass because you got to, nobody's gonna agree.
I mean, why not, man?
And that's the shame, that's your job to, for you to, for you to vote on those things. You know what I'm saying? Man, I could be run out of election. Man, I would win for a month, then they be trying to, like my mom told me, Junior, you win, don't get impeached. You know what I'm saying? I said, Mama, city councils don't get impeached, but no, you. Best answer. In Bo Blong. What if we say they got the, they're probably right behind it, where they got an open lot? Do you want a strip club right there?
Yeah.
Well, if the kids go there and see them, and see those things, you, you're not gonna. It sounds good.
They the strip club.
But it's.
Oh, they big delicious, man.
But that would be, because it is, we know, glad we would never had to answer that. Because most strip clubs gotta be out of city limits anyway. There's rules in place for those things. That's what I'm saying. Some things, people don't understand, there's rules in place for those things can't be.
But I understand, there was not, because I feel like when you said businesses, because you've been living in Oak, District C. So I'm thinking like, you think like, man, if I get city council, this is the type of business I would like to be attracted.
Well, we could go look and see what's needed. I just, I just told you, we got, we only got Walmart.
So you don't feel like a strip club is needed?
Oh. But it gotta be, no, it's rules where certain things can be built. And I don't even have to, you hear me? It's fun, but most of those things outside the city limits, so they gonna have to, it's more pattern.
I I say that because I've I've met this person, I can't even recall what his name was. And he was saying like, his plan was to bring the Hooters. Uh, that's not a strip club, but Hooters to Lake Charles. And he said the city kind of stopped them from doing that.
How long ago that was?
I want to tell you, when I heard that story, it was probably like ten years ago.
Well, I, it happened, uh, once when I I had to been in my twenties. You know what I'm saying? And I'm not saying that the city stopped it. It was most of where they wanted it. You know what I'm saying? You got the, you got the past alcohol review board. So it gotta be so far from a school, so far from a church. It's more than just people saying they don't want it. It's probably where they want to put it. You see what I'm saying? It's, it gotta be like three hundred, three hundred feet from a school or a church if you selling alcohol.
I get the school part, but what's wrong with the church or Hooters?
That's the rule. I don't make them. Rule's been around since before us.
But this was so odd.
That's, I'm gonna, that's, that's the rule.
Thing is, that's what's so odd about it. That's what's so odd about it. And I know I kind of joke about a strip club. In my whole life, I've only been in a strip club twice. And that's not really my thing.
Yeah, but we just.
But at the same time, it's kind of like business is business. Because if you set a strip club wherever or whenever, people that is that is attracted to that kind of stuff will go there and spend money. And then like, um, there's this guy who invited me once, I'm like, man, that's not my thing. He said, man, have you ever had some wings from a strip club? I'm like, nah, that's the best one you'll ever eat. But it's kind of like, it's a business nonetheless. If you're not attracted to that type of crowd, don't go.
Make you understand a little bit different. You know why the South grew so fast? Because it was nothing there. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So not saying the nightclub, say the strip club got there when it was nothing. And the homes built around it, they were grandfathered in. See, now we got neighborhoods already.
Yeah.
And so you got to be like, it's like three hundred feet from somebody's front door. Man, you know how far that is? Three hundred yards, like a football field, man.
It'd be hard to find.
It'd be hard to find. So then you have to go in front to and get approved for those things. Not saying they will, but then you gonna face restrictions and and all that. So a lot of those businesses, like, if I gotta do all that, I think I I wanna go there. You know, because Lake Charles is really tight.
I think it's a, in a sense, though, it's a like a, uh, uh, as a foreigner speaking, if it's like, man, it's in Haiti, like, you wanna build a strip club, you build a strip club. There is no.
But the thing is, you're not gonna force people in, people are going where they got to go.
What time, what time strip clubs close?
Five, six in the morning.
It it's rules that on Sagis, Lake Charles, you gotta close at two. You know what I'm saying? Sometimes it's rules for stuff inside the city that it won't, it won't survive. So I wouldn't have to say.
But that is what is kind of confusing to me, like you were saying, as a foreigner, the way I'm looking at it. We got clothes all around town. Of course, clothes, as you're saying, they close at two in the morning because that's the rules. And I'm sure if a strip club would have to be within the city, they had to follow the same rules. But the whole idea of they look at strip club as if it's a negative thing. But the thing is, if you open a strip club, people will show up if they wanna go there. I don't have to, if you're a religious person, that's not your thing.
Yeah, not your thing.
You don't go.
But back then, back then, when the Hooters came, uh. Yeah, I don't. I can't remember who was on the board. I don't, I don't want to say anything false. Uh, if I was an older city council and, uh, if I'd had to just guess, I was a young man when the Hooters came here. And then you gotta realize it's rules to who own it. Then they got the Hooters in Lafayette, they got the Hooters in Beaumont. Well, that man probably got the rights to both those Hooters. So they just make it look like Lake Charles don't want it. No, you gotta get approved from him, he a franchise. But people just say stuff and.
And and I understand that.
I think I'm saying, we got to educate people to speak the facts.
The thing is, and I understand that I genuinely do.
If you think that man who owned the one in Lafayette, the one that owned in Beaumont, gonna want one forty minutes away?
But thing is, why wouldn't they have one in Lake Charles, though? And I understand how you can say, because we have the owner of malls and he kind of explained this whole demographic thing into with with us, like how if I got this business, I can own this whole area.
Shout out Michael Boy.
Michael Boy or anyone, we had him in here.
Yeah.
And but in a sense, what don't make sense is, because Lake Charles is a city within itself. But let's just say for some reason, I'm twenty two, twenty three. I'm in to strip clubs and seeing beautiful women. Why do I have to drive down our way to see them?
Well, no, what I'm saying. That's the question.
This is not Haiti, bro.
What's in the city? Because the city is guidelines. Tell them, this is not Haiti. But no, but if you really, people don't realize, even Lafayette has a lot to offer. But most of the stuff is not truly in Lafayette.
Oh, yeah, Lafayette got.
It's not truly in Lafayette.
Because I think.
We call it Lafayette, just like we say stuff is in Houston. All that stuff's not in really Houston.
Okay, I agree. Why not have it in Wesley, Salford, Baton Rouge Wells?
All those places have their own rules. Now, you can have a strip club in Salford. They had two of them.
Yeah, they do.
You can. You just can't have one in Lake Charles. You see what I'm saying? But using get those places like Lake Charles, Lafayette had spared it because you had so many rural areas. Country towns, towns, and stuff that wasn't really city, that they grew into like Youngsville. When I was in college, Youngsville was a farm. Now, that's where all the four hundred thousand dollar houses at, four, it's in Youngsville. But whatever they had there before, it still can be there because the houses grew. Lake Charles has been here so long, those places been here. So the rules were set before me and you. All of the folk.
The rules cannot be changed?
No, the rules. But it takes a lot to change, man. Like I said, how many people you got to have to vote for you to get that change?
It's like, it's it's four.
It's four. But that's why you gotta have relationships.
But as a person who understand business, because that's kind of what you talked about. I understand business, I understand a businessman or whatever. Business is business. It brings money and money pay taxes. And then with that business, they hire people and then people got more money in their pocket, they move and so on and so forth. But what, in your, in your professionalism, like what makes you think in a sense, they kind of like choose what businesses they want to have? Because business is business.
They really don't choose. It's the audiences they have in place.
But that's what I'm saying, they kind of have rules in a sense that make them choose.
But those orders been around for so long, right? And sometime the businesses don't want to adjust to the orders. You know what it takes to change the orders? Or a city rule that been in place or grandfathered in for for twenty years? So when they come and they hear these these rules and these guidelines that people have, they be like, oh, no, I ain't, I ain't dealing with that.
Yeah, but I mean, but but.
You know what I'm saying?
But for the development of a city, I think it'd be.
You gotta have them all, because you gotta think about it. You've been, you travel, you've been to big cities, right? Atlanta, New York, wherever, LA, wherever. When you go to those cities, you see all those things, right?
But all those things wasn't a part of the city when it was there.
But okay, no, no, no.
And the audiences may be different and allow different things.
But the thing is, they allow it to, it allows those cities to grow to what they are.
Yeah.
That's why they are what they are, LA, New York, Atlanta, Miami, you name it. But as a Lake Charles, and I'm sure as a Lake Charles, of course, we understand that Lake Charles cannot be compared to Atlanta or LA or wherever. But hopefully, we inspired fifty, seventy, eighty years in the future to be somewhat like those cities.
No, I would wanted to. I would have wanted to. Right now, it it wouldn't bother me. Well, of course, I wouldn't agree to a strip club in in District C, I wouldn't.
Why not?
The man said no, man.
I wouldn't. But if a business coming, if Hooters came, I would have no problem with it.
You ever been to Hooters? I've never been.
They have a Twin Peaks coming. Twin Peaks coming, all right by them hotels going to casino.
Is it called?
Twin Peaks.
Wow, that is.
Good, this is a, it's a, it's a version of like Hooters.
Yeah.
But it's coming. The idea here is just like what you just asked me. What about the flooding and the terrorists? Most of all your businesses is right around that area. Once you pass Twelve Street, heading north, how much open property they do have? See, we want something, but I don't understand then how much property we do have that's truly open and don't have to fight those rules. The rules in place, you feel me? So when somebody wanna come, they just look at what's in place already. They not gonna come buy a million dollar lot and then got to fight those issues. They come in, they pay people to come in and look at the orders and say, well, I don't know if this worked, this fight. You know what I'm saying? You know, because this is already here, you know? You almost landlocked, so you got to find. And that's what they are programmed for, to find business that fit the area. But the worst part about it is that we don't support it once it's here anyway. We got IHOP just closed. You know how many people leave out the terrace or pass up IHOP to go to Pick Grill? Breakfast is breakfast. Eggs is eggs.
Well, some people got preference, though.
I'm just saying, but when you have preference and you ask yourself, when the last time you been IHOP?
That was never my thing.
So when he asks you if it's closed, you got to support business. You see, we got the inside, the infrastructure of what you doing, you, for a business survive, they got to make money. And if nobody in the area wanna go to business, how they gonna survive?
I feel like in a sense, that's like the business fault in a sense. Because if you got good food, I'm sure there's a way you can advertise.
Because now, everything like right now. How many Golden Hooks they just opened up? What's, what's the new one they just opened up? They got going to, they got a Golden, they had Golden Hooks on fourteen. And then they just opened another one?
Yes.
On, um, they just opened another one on another side of town.
It's so good?
No, I don't know. I'm just saying, they just opened two Golden Hooks. Lake Charles not big enough for two Golden Hooks. Because you like Golden Hooks is, see, everybody can leave District C and go to the South and they got the same thing. Right?
Yeah. I mean, if it's good, you can, how many Popeyes they have?
How many? What's the chicken place on on Nelson? Chick-fil-A?
Yeah, Chick-fil-A.
How many Chick-fil-A's they got?
One, two.
One? No, that's closed. Because nobody else, they only got one Chick-fil-A. So that Chick-fil-A would have been successful.
The owner's my neighbor, by the way.
No matter where they have been, because you only got one of them, right?
I mean, Chick-fil-A, Chick-fil-A is always that or not.
It's just chicken.
Yeah, I feel like they got a lot of chicken places, man.
I'm just saying, but those places, there's, there's no double to it. There's not, no way, if you want it, I don't care where you, you got to drive.
Do you drive the one at the mall for the longest? When did it close?
Always close. I ain't been to the mall in years.
They got a lot of fried chicken places out here, but.
No, what I'm trying to tell you, what I'm saying, even even burger place, you don't have it, most stuff in the South.
But you see what I'm saying, though?
They just have it in the South.
But you see where I'm coming from, that there's a lot of, a lot of fried chicken.
They just have it just there. So that mean if you live on this side of town, if you want it, you have to drive over there. But to get back on our subject.
Okay. And I don't have an issue, I got a feeling it to break it up.
No, let's go.
Because I know a lot of men out here, at least out here, they always go to Atlanta. And I, why you going to Houston? They say, why you going to Houston, man? I'm going to the strip club, they got some real strip clubs out there.
Man, they ain't gonna.
No, 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 they real though. And I'm like, why you going out there, man? Because like I said, the strip club ain't my thing. It really ain't. But why you going to Atlanta? Why you going to Houston? Oh, they got the real strip club out there.
So what's your most popular area you know about Houston? You know where Pearland is?
Yes.
You see any strip clubs in Pearland?
Nah.
Because that's a neighborhood.
But within the city, it's still an accessible thing.
Pearland is Pearland. Pearland is not Houston.
Actually, I got robbed over there, but.
I'm just saying, but it's not Houston.
But I got robbed there.
It's Pearland. But guess what we, that's what we call it. Houston. So that means it's a whole different city. And has a whole different rules and we just call it all.
In Houston, because it's a used city. And I understand what you're saying.
Vegas, Las Vegas is not much.
Yeah.
It's just like, Vegas is not much, but the whole thing called Vegas, but if you go, that was the first time I know, like, you can't go like that much. It's many cities.
Hey, but it's not Vegas. We just call it Vegas because we don't know.
Yeah.
And all those areas got their own rules and all guidelines to what you have to abide by.
But, but, but my thing is, no, no, my thing is, no, 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 I would tell you what my thing is. Okay, let's just say something come up, right? Um, they wanna open a lake charge and for whatever rules and guideline, they cannot quite open a lake charge. Why we don't, I guess in a sense, direct them, as you saying, Suffolk, Westick, wherever?
That they can.
Open it there, because it's outside of City Lake Charles, like you were saying. Because in a sense, the city will go within itself and then.
They do. They got two of them in Suffolk.
So you're not even supporting this? You advocating for strip club, but you never support no strip club.
They got them.
I, I, I've been to two strip clubs in my whole life.
But they got two in Suffolk.
I know which one, I know one in Suffolk, I don't know about the other one.
Which one you know?
The one on one oh eight, that's all I know about.
They got another one was, uh, on ninety, huh?
Yeah.
So it's really two of them, so, and you mean you didn't even support them?
During the ninety, during the ninety, I went there once, I went to two strip clubs in my whole life. The one in ninety and one in New Orleans. And it ain't my thing.
So you ain't do one oh eight then?
Never been to one oh eight.
See?
I'm just saying, I feel like strip club ain't my thing, let's take this whole thing off subject.
No, we just having fun.
But I always feel like, strip club don't make sense to me. It's kinda like, I always looked at it as, could you imagine you hungry? You starving and they take you to a restaurant and they put that food in front of you. Best food you could ever thought of. You smell it while you're hungry and then they took it and I went and go home. That's why I never understood strip club.
Yeah, I understand. But that was one of your main questions, so we just, we just asking it. We just asking questions. And I'm telling you, in District C, we won't ever have no strip clubs.
So you're never gonna have to go over there and look at.
You never had to go there.
And then you go home and eat chicken nuggets.
But if you go, I'm like, that don't make sense. If that strip club got the best chicken wings, they won't have it in District C, I'm telling you. We had to find somebody else with wings.
But, um, this is good real quick though. Um, born and raised in Lake Charles, as you were saying, you got your whole family and friends and wife support you in what you, in your endeavors, in a sense. But have you ever have found any fight back? Because I don't believe that anybody just lined up and been, I ain't go for it. I'm sure you have somebody been, I mean, I was crazy.
I knew this question was gonna come. As when we, uh, my investment group, we purchased the apartments on Fifth Avenue, the old flats. They had vagrants living in them, they was, uh, about to put a blight on them, where they were gonna be within some timeframe, that they was gonna be tearing them down. And then my investment group wanted to come in and buy them and remodel them because we thought they would be worth something. As long as we spending money into it. So when we purchased it, immediately, we gets, we was on the news. The city calling us to come down, telling us we got so much time to put the first nut on the wall, they gonna tear them down. And we just bought them immediately. The neighbors complaining, I'm like, these things been shut down since the storm. Vagrants living in them. I went to some of my neighbors, they told me, man, they smoking weed and you can smell a hair on coming out the building. Well, why nobody ain't call the cops? You know what I'm saying? But when I buy it, we had to go downtown to the city and meet with the people. So I'm like, y'all got enough power that y'all wanna tell me what to do with the property I just purchased? You who ain't got no skin in the game. You ain't spent one dollar, but I gotta come answer to you about what I just purchased. But I didn't, I didn't, my wife called me, I said, man, I'm gonna be honest. I said, man, to hell with them people. I own this. You who ain't got no skin in the game gonna come tell me to do with my money? That like me come and tell you, man, you can wash your car, or I'm gonna take it from you. It been sitting there since the storm and nobody did nothing.
Yeah.
Nothing with it.
So why you think that happened?
Grass was high, grass growing through the windows. It raining inside of it. People sleeping and shitting in it. But when I buy it, I gotta come meet.
So why you think, why you think that happened?
No, because then they can put a face to the business. I got upset, but they basically saying, hold up, hold up, man, okay, it's gonna, y'all bought it. But we got rules in place that you must.
What was the who before that?
Abide by.
Before you buy it, what was the who as well?
Man, I didn't know, I'm just telling you, that's why we have to educate. I immediately got mad, I'm telling you, I'm the same person. I immediately got mad and the city won't just say, there's rules in place. And, but I went there ready. But it's rules in place, but we gonna give you time. We not worried about what everybody saying. We gonna give you time to pull the proper permits, acquire enough insurance to say and prove that you can rebuild this place. But when they first sent me a certified letter, I'm mad as hell. You feel me?
Yeah.
Why I got to answer y'all is my business. It been sitting there. But that's because I didn't know everything that goes into those type of things. You know what I'm saying? You gotta know the rules.
Let me ask you this, that's gonna be one of my very last question on this. Um, as a person who currently running for councilman, let's just say if there's a message you had to say to the people, like one of those type of messages where you had to say at the end, Tommy Bill will approve this message, you got a message, what would it be overall? If somebody was gonna be watching this, where they gonna be like, okay, maybe I should get behind this guy.
I tell them, I call it my three A's. I'm approachable, I'm gonna be accessible, and we gonna hold the city accountable. Approachable mean you can talk to me anywhere. I can be in my front yard, coming out of church. If you got a problem, if you see me, it's not, it's not a bad day to come talk to me because all I'm gonna know is what you tell me. And after you talk to me, I'm gonna be accessible, so I'm gonna give you my number, call me. Let's, let's, let's eat, let's go, I'm gonna come by your crib, let's go take care of it. And the accountable part of it is that after you tell me and we got a plan, we gonna go to the city and hold them accountable, if we right. You feel me?
Yeah.
If we right, we gonna hold them accountable to do what they supposed to do. That's all I think the city councilman is. You got to better be, to be spoken to, you got a better answer and you gotta go better solve the problem. And if it's something that's within our job that we can do, we gonna hold them and make sure they get it done. All the rest of city council, shit, all the rest of stuff is, is, like I said, it take four votes out of seven. It's more than me. But the personal stuff that really matters today, that when I walk these streets and I talk to these people in District C, whether it's Morganfield, Blow Blong, Old Park, Hillcrest, Broadmoor, the Flower Streets, everybody wanna know if I call you a problem or you gonna answer. And that's what I can ensure.
So I mean, like, you know, I ask this question, I'm watching the end of the podcast. When all said and done, what's your legacy to be?
That I was there. I was that guy that answered. I helped someone. That's my legacy, man. T. Bill did his shit, man. He helped us. I called him, he answered, we took care of the problem. It's a good dude. That's my legacy. I was there for the people. That's what, that's what you for your job. If you look at the jobs, that's like number three, you the representative of District C. You know what I'm saying?
So where can people can learn about your campaign and if they wanna get involved with?
They can call me. I got a Facebook page and everybody.
I wanna tell the people, let the people knows where they can ask.
Campaign to elect Tommy Billbo with District C. But I'm easy. You can call me at three three seven, three zero nine, four six six nine. The easy way to find out about me is to call me, because nobody can explain me more than me.
That's true.
You know what I'm saying? And I offer to everybody, man, call me. Stop by twenty four thirty three Eighteenth Street. Ring my doorbell, I'm gonna answer. That's the only way you can get to know me. Everything else is, you never know. If somebody else opinion, you got to come meet me, because what they got? I think last election they had twenty six hundred people voted or more. The district got like over four thousand registered voters. It's easy for you to come meet me than come meet all four thousand of you.
Yeah.
Uh, come meet me, I'm approachable. I'm approachable if I'm in Happy Hour, I'm approachable. If I'm walking down the street, I'm approachable. If I'm in the gym pumping weights, come talk to me. I don't, you know me, I'm one person. It's four thousand of you. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You know who I am. I'm the run, running for city council. I'm gonna be the city councilman, so you gonna know who I am. I'm gonna be the face. Come talk to me.
And even, and even though we trying to ask you as much question as possible, but we only two people, as you were saying, compared to the mass populace. Is there anything else maybe we didn't ask you, you wanted to talk about?
Oh, man, I'm enjoying it, you know what I'm saying? I, I don't know, I'm, I'm a, I'm a answer first type of guy. If you ask a question, I don't wanna sound repetitive, I don't wanna give a big speech, I'm just gonna be honest to what you asking me. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
That's all I can do. You ask me a question, I can be, give you my honest answer. And I think that's, that's one of my best qualities. I can't promise you nothing. I could easily said, oh, I'm gonna give you a strip club in District C, I'm honest to you. No, man, we ain't getting no, we ain't getting no, I like, I like. But it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be in District C now, you feel me? It's not gonna be in District C. You know what I'm saying? But some people promise stuff they can't give, I can't, you know? Everyone somewhere I like it. But it's not gonna be in District C.
I guess we'll edit on this note.
I wanted to, wanted to have you in the podcast and I think it's been a pleasure, man. I mean, really like, you know, even though if you wasn't running for city council, I still wanted you to be on the podcast. But I know, but you still let me say, man, let's, let's, let's.
Am I bad?
No, you're good, let's, let's do it, you know? Thank you so much for coming to the show.
Yeah, like I said, it was like a genuine conversation and sorry if I pushed the strip club too much.
No, I'm just saying, but all you can be, if you can't be honest, you, you, you not who you are.
But yeah, honestly, it was like a genuine conversation. As per usual, we, we've enjoyed it. And for anybody that's currently watching this, and I'm sure you had all the information that Tommy Billbo put out there to reach out to on Facebook, even gave his personal number. And he's even addressed. I would even go that far, but.
And when I win, I'm gonna still have the same attitude. You still gonna better come.
Oh, I don't think you can change your attitude.
My address ain't gonna change. My phone number ain't gonna change. And I'm still welcome to you, no matter what. All we can do is try and get to answer.
I mean, you've been like, I know, I've been knowing you for a minute now and you've been a genuine person. So that's what you see in this podcast is you. That's, that's, like, you nothing like.
It's more of a B version, my wife been threatening not to say certain things. You know, I got my campaign manager said, don't you? So, you know, they probably texting me right now saying, you really, you really went there, but.
But it's not lies, they wanna see if they would drop it, this ain't lies.
Yeah, I still, no, I'm fine, but I still wanna be me, who I am.
Yeah, I will finish where he's at, like, it's got, like you were saying though, it's their authenticity. When you meet somebody, wherever they may be, it's just one thing, at least for me, that I appreciate is their authenticity. Like, I don't prefer where I meet somebody, they say the most fucked up shit I've never heard, but I can appreciate that who they are. Compared to somebody that will tell you the nicest things, where you gotta be like, hmm, this is lying to me. In a sense, and then like when we first started this podcast, one thing we wanted to do, and I was like, man, listen, this ain't the news. I don't have to keep my neck straight and, you know, and put a suit on and I, and then it look like, hey, this, 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 and that. I didn't wanna do that, because we here to have a conversation.
Yeah.
To where we get to know each other and then hopefully people that's gonna be watching this podcast gonna get to know about you, in a sense. And we've done this pretty thing about this, toward the two of this podcast that is personal. But we displayed it nonetheless, because authenticity is what this is all about. And once again, thank you for stopping by.
Oh, it was great, I, I really enjoyed it.
It was a great.
No, I really enjoyed, because it's who I am. I can't change me.
No, that's a fact.
I can't, I can't, I've been me, I be fifty three in July, I am who I am.
Who you gonna be?
Fifty three in July.
Back in the.
Yeah, I'll be fifty three, man, you know? You know, I'm telling you.
This is got issues.
But then I got my silver fox working, I got my silver fox working, you know what I'm saying? I was gonna do the whole big thing.
But he doesn't look fifty three though.
You know, I was gonna do the whole big thing, but it was too much.
Black no crack.
Man, these are them chickens, those chicken places they be opening.
Chicken, the chicken be eating at the strip club, look what it is.
They open a bunch of fried, fried chicken places. I need to ask the question, what's going on?
I, I, and I guess what, guess what my favorite two dishes is in this world?
Fried chicken and watermelon?
Fried chicken and fried fish. I love fried fish. No, I eat watermelon, I do eat watermelon, but my favorite, when my mama, when my mama would cook fried chicken or fish, man, the neighbor would empty out, that was, that was a.
Not gumbo, not crawfish.
I'm talking about, I just love it. Crawfish is overrated. I, I, when we grew up, crawfish, we got that like once a year. That was like a family celebration, like you didn't get, we didn't get crawfish like that. Maybe Good Friday or a celebration, that's when you got crawfish. All this crawfish every day, the driving spots, man, we didn't. Man, you had to, and crawfish wasn't, I guess, compared to what my parents made back then, I don't know what the cost of it was, but you just didn't eat it like I eat it today. Now it's everyday meal, now it's like eating eggs and bacon, you go get crawfish.
Yeah.
We didn't, we didn't eat it.
They feel small as hell though.
But we didn't eat it like that. It was, it was more of a privilege.
I don't think, I don't see what's the big deal about crawfish.
No, crawfish is good, but it was a privilege when we grew up. You know what I'm saying? It was a privilege. You know what I'm saying? If we wanted something with season, you know, we'd go behind Ice House or Cameron or Hack Bay, we caught crabs. You know, crawfish was a, you know, like eating lobster.
People get it every day.
Yeah, crawfish is like eating lobster to us, you just didn't have it as much. So it's just a different timeframe. Like I say, times change. But one thing, if you can fry chicken, shit. I'm telling you.
So, man, it's just like, I don't think I've ever seen like a black person that said they don't like fried chicken.
Oh, I'm telling you, that's just not black culture, that's just down south. That was like a, uh, that was like a Sunday event. I used to, now I'm a member of Christian Baptist, when I grew up, we grew up as a member of Mount Pilgrim, Harvey Lawson. On a Sunday afternoon, when we got out of church, my, at my grandfather's house, we knew it was gonna be two things, barbecue or fried chicken. That, that was a given. I'm talking about the women cook, the, my uncles, my grandfather, my dad and them. That's why one of my greatest passions is cooking. Because that's what we, that's what.
Oh, really, you love cooking?
That's what, that's what families was built on. That's since beginning down south, everything was built on cooking. Every celebration, everything we have is built around somebody cooking something big. Everything, I don't care what holiday it is, if it's not even a holiday, it's still built around cooking and a little extra beverage. You know what I'm saying? Man, that's what, that's what I, that's our culture. That's what, you know, we love food. Love it. You don't get this fine, not eat.
There's this dude I knew that was just bragging about how well he knew how to cook. He's like, man, of course I know how to cook. Look at this. I'm like, I'm like, what the?
You see that video where the dude can just do the, the, like, the fried chicken, they close his eyes and he can tell you Popeyes and, and churches, chicken. A true ninja.
You know, and I, I remember, you know, when churches, I remember when Popeyes came, you know what I'm saying? But it wasn't nothing, I was, I was walking in Old Park. Uh, a young fella opened his door. I don't wanna say his name because people might go attack his house for it. When he opened the door, I was giving him my card, man, his house smelled so good. I could smell the chicken when it was coming out. I was hoping he say, man, Bill will come get you a piece. He told me, he said, man, I said, man, I'm telling you, I'm getting weak. Me, we ain't walking no more today, we waiting on this chicken, you know? You can smell it, you been, what is it, good fried food?
Yeah.
You know, it takes forever, we didn't have, I'm telling you, we didn't have all that growing up. You didn't have the outside burners, the outside kitchens. Man, you cooked in the house, on the stove, on the, on the gas stove, man, you, you could smell the food two houses over, you knew when it was time to eat.
But nowadays, people don't cook like that.
You know what I'm saying? But this, this fellow.
We're losing recipes. We're losing recipes.
No, we people, they cook, my family cooked like that. That was a, that was a family thing, my family, we cook, I cook like that at home. Man, when I cook, I want everybody to come to my house.
So you never invited me to eat at your house?
We about, she, you beat me to the punch. I just, I just invited y'all to our property on Ryan Street to a major cookout. And then I would be walking more neighborhoods and I'm cooking gumbo. But that's it, but gumbo has become universal to what everybody believes gumbo is. Gumbo in New Orleans is different than gumbo in Lake Charles. Gumbo in Texas is different, but guess what's never different? Fried chicken. You know what I'm saying, fried chicken? I'm just telling you, you can't, fried chicken is fried chicken. You can't, you, fried chicken is fried chicken. Gumbo, sauce pecan, somebody like it red, somebody like it brown. Gumbo, somebody like it thick, somebody like it light, but guess what people like? Just good fried chicken. You can't, you can't do that.
You're a true ninja.
I am. Born and raised, I keep telling you.
But we gotta put this thing to an end, though, maybe I'll, like, we can continue this.
You might just be hungry with all this fried chicken, man.
No, I'm telling you.
I'm about to go get our chicken wings.
Hey, you know, that don't change, man. All, all, I don't want to say it wrong, all coaches eat fried chicken.
Yeah, but I'm in.
They all eat fried fish. They all, everybody.
Yeah, but.
Everybody don't do gumbo.
So, why they give us the stigma then?
Hmm?
Why they give us the stigma?
Because ours taste better. You know, we just have a different.
They got more seasoning in it.
Yeah, more seasoning they get. It makes you want to eat it. You know what I'm saying? The seasoning in the.
And it is washed, too.
It's washed, but it's seasoning the skin, and the, and the, and the meat. You're like, you're like balls.
Yeah.
Man, this man, this man open up, when this man is open up.
I don't think ball's chicken is all out of here.
They won.
See, everybody, I don't.
No, they won.
No, I, I, I'm a ball fan.
I don't think so.
Only because, Doc.
Balls gon' fancy me when you open back up.
No, with my old man, when I was young, when I was young. When my father, when he be out a little too late. Them, them, them people, my mom and major group, they had like a understanding. They didn't have rules, but it was understanding when they got off work, and you're going off on that last day. Them old men would get out there, go have a couple of beverages. But when Bill, that's why I call my daddy, he knew he stayed out a little too, too late. What no rule, guess what he came home with?
Chicken.
Balls, man. And I hate it, he came home, and my kid, me and my sister's older. So, we would know. He would come in the house, you could smell it when walking in. We all get up, my momma jumping up to say a piece, we like, whoa. He got, he got some balls. We go, he had balls, and he had, balls, and he had mama's chicken. Mama's chicken was, uh, where they had Jim Seaford is on Broad.
Yeah, yeah, I love Jim Seaford.
That was, that was mama's chicken back then. So, it was just different. I'm telling you, you grew up, that's what we done. Everything, food fixed marriages back then. You come home, you come home, even the half of the day has some discussions. You come home with a fried pork chop or a, a twelve piece for the family. Uh, she, we had this, we had this argument tomorrow.
What the men just did, what the?
What the men done?
The old man doing the lesion, man, he come home. She, he, me and my sisters would get up, my mom would be coming ready, she was short. I'm, calm down. He got food. He got food, you know what I'm saying? No, I'm just saying, I, I just, I think I am what you see. There's no fake to me. There's no, what you get, this is who I am, and that's how I'm gonna be every day. I'm every day, all my, all my jobs, all my endeavors, when people came to meet, that's who they met. And that's who I want to be as a city councilman. I want to be this guy.
And this is Tommy Billbo, he approved this message.
He's so silly. But yeah, but, um, for the sake of the podcast, I know we been pushing an hour and a half right now. We don't want to make it two, three hour, because we can do this for like five hours.
Yeah, I'm just saying, but when you're genuine.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You have a, a good conversation.
It's a good conversation.
Yeah, it's just this podcast.
But for the sake of the podcast, we can't make a five hour podcast.
No, because this is a definite, because this is a podcast for you running for city council.